Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the January 2nd, 2024 regular meeting and the executive session on January 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
I'll give it to Marty and I didn't see who's seconded.
Yeah.
Matthew, okay. Sorry. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes. Counselor Height?
Yes.
Counselor Meany?
Yes.
Counselor Gas?
Yes.
Counselor McGuire?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Great, thank you. Next up is public comments of non-agenda items. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Is there anyone online joining us who has comments on non-agenda items? Feel free to raise your hand. Oh, okay. Go ahead, just please introduce yourself and state your address.
My name's Lisa Elena Gilmore. I'm at 208 Portland Road in Gray.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, we wanted to bring up the Gray Community Day that we had last year in June of last year. And this is where we had the town committees and nonprofit organizations get to come together. We were hoping that great neighbors could meet each other and learn more about our organizations and committees and hopefully promote some volunteerism. We wondered if the council would like to see that done again. And if so, we were looking at maybe May 18th. So I wanted to put that out there.
Um. May 18th.
So Saturday, right, Lisa?
Yes, it's Saturday.
Would you be looking to, I know last year you were forced inside due to the weather. Would you be looking to do that outside or inside?
Oh, I'd really like to do it outside.
Okay. I guess my, I think it was certainly a worthwhile event. It was pretty well attended, which I thought was nice. And hopefully we could get, like you said, some more volunteer interest out of it. I think I would like to get a little feedback, though, from just staff about their capacity to support it. I don't, I don't have input from Mo or his team about whether they'd be available or what that looks like for them that time of year, so.
Right, okay.
You know, do others have thoughts? Go ahead, Dan.
I know Mo worked really hard. I know that and I really, we really appreciate all the council members. It was a great turnout.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh.
No, go ahead. Yeah, I would love to see it happen again. I think, you know, Kristy, you raised a good point about the capacity piece. The other piece is in May, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but we have a lot of plans for the panel campus and the reconstruction of things. So I think there's going to be probably more conversations about where we can do stuff and how we can fit things in.
Good point.
There is the old Hamilton property. Maybe we can do something with the schools depending on the dates and stuff. But it's just one thing I think we want to keep in the back of our minds. Yeah, I thought it was great. I, and I'd love to see it happen again.
I realize we're having a bit of a discussion, but I think we can proceed quickly. Yeah, go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it would be great to get some participation from some other organizations as well. I mean, I think we did have some turnout from other groups, but, you know, widening that, I think it's definitely worth trying again.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. I mean, Lisa, are you willing to take on the organization of that? Are you feeling supported in that or I don't know?
Yeah, Lacey and I would be working on it. And we will try to get more community organizations than we did have.
Okay. Why don't we say May 18th tentatively? We'll just have to check, like I said, with staff about whether that works for them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who'd like to make a comment on non-agenda items? Not seeing any. Okay, so I will close the public comment at 7:08 PM. So you'll notice in your agenda, usually where we have presentation space, I've adjusted this to discussions. We were originally supposed to have members of the Gray New Gloucester Raymond Little League here this evening to present about the Douglas Field relocation and the grant that they're applying for through the Major League Baseball Grant Program. I had word from Sandy Carter that she and Nate Stone and Mo Russo were meeting with Sebago Technics, the company that worked on the trail expansion over on the Gateway Property earlier in 2023. She is still waiting on some draft materials from Sebago Technics and would like to hold off on that presentation until she had more information. So hopefully we will see them at a meeting sometime in the next month or so. But I didn't want to lose the opportunity to cover something here. So I put on the agenda tonight, a discussion about the volunteer appreciation event. We had talked during the budget revisions we made over the summer about moving the volunteer appreciation event outside, out of the Blueberry Festival into something more formal, as it had been prior to COVID. There used to be a volunteer appreciation event hosted at Spring Meadows Golf Course. Not saying we have to do that exact same thing. It was usually done in, I think, April, which is sort of the height. Well, I guess it's right after budget season, but anyway, I just would like to open it up to think about what that would look like. I think we need to do a little bit more of a formal event than we've been doing in years past. Granted, COVID was really the impetus for hosting it the way we've been doing it, but I think we could get back to doing something a little bit more, like I said, formal. So I think we had talked about incorporating a volunteer appreciation event into this Gray Community Day last year, so that's one possibility. Or, you know, there is the formal event, the dinner. I think they hosted a dinner. I never attended, but there was a formal dinner that was hosted and presentation award ceremony. Could do something like that. Just curious what folks think might be good going forward. Go ahead, Dan.
I like the idea of making it a more formal event. Having it be associated with another event, the community days in particular, certainly seems a better fit than the Blueberry Festival. I don't know how Lisa and Lacey would feel about incorporating it in that. I do think we do want to do something a little bit more formal. So I, you know, it used to be at Spring Meadows is what they did before in the past. And they would have, you know, sort of a buffet sort of thing. And then, and then presentations. You know, I don't know, I don't know what people would want. Because that's really the conundrum for me as far as recognition.
Right.
But, you know, I know it could be. I don't want to say a trophy kind of a thing, but something that was, that was presented that was similar, that was done, you know, repeatedly over time. So it became a little bit more of a tradition and more well-known. You know, I kind of think of the Boston Post Kane sort of thing. Only something along those lines for volunteers. And maybe we would have, you know, people's pictures or something that we would display in the town hall somewhere. You know, with a plaque with people's names on it or something that could change every year.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Things like that, you know, might be make the whole thing more visible.
Yeah, I like the idea of having a display in the town hall that's rotating year to year. It's a good idea. Ann, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think we should go back to Spring Meadows, honestly. I don't think we should do it at Gray Community Day. I, first of all, that's during the day on a Saturday where not everybody is available. The Spring Meadows event, it feels, honestly, it feels a little disrespectful, you know, to say that we're honoring people's volunteer activities when we don't give them a standalone event and it, you know, at which to honor them. And really, we did start out with, you know, doing it outside of the Blueberry Fest in part because of the pandemic. But I just, it's always really hard to get the, you know, access to the mic. There's a ton of background noise interference and, and sort of distraction. And I just, I think if we're really going to honor people, the way to do it was with a standalone event where we can, you know, control the environment and offer them food and, you know, and access to drink. Anyway, you know, there's a paid bar. And, you know, really honor them and not just try to piggyback it onto something else for convenience.
Dan, you have another comment?
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of it as convenience, but I hear what Ann's saying and I agree with that. I think we'd probably need to pull something together because we'd have to budget some money for it, which I'd be willing to support.
Right, that was going to be my next question is, I don't, I don't think we have. Technically, if we did it in the spring of this year, it would fall in the FY24 budget, which we have not budgeted for. So maybe, maybe it would be more appropriate to budget in FY25 and do something in the late summer, early fall. But yeah, I agree. I think I would like to see something more formal. That's really a recognition of people's time and commitment to the town. I think we haven't been able to accomplish that quite as well, doing it as part of another kind of community festival, so. Marty or Matthew, did you have thoughts?
No, no, I'm good.
I'm going to take that as a no, Matthew. Okay, well, what are, regarding the timeline, if we're doing this community day in May, what are folks' thoughts about waiting till FY25 and maybe the summer or fall?
Yeah, that'd work.
Is, is it known that we have no other discretionary funds with which we could pay for a spring event? I mean, there's never a good time to do something like this. There's, you know, it's always like summer vacation or the end of the school year or the start of the school year or whatever it might be, you know? It just, it always seems hard to organize it. But I kind of, I mean, I, there's a part of me that likes doing it in the spring just to kind of finish that up, but it's true that with the budget and everything else, it can be a kind of a crammed time of year. So maybe early September might be a better one. But on the other hand, we also have, you know, we, we always have, well, we have our, our, you know, town council retreat and people are getting back to school and things like that. So I'm not sure if that's better or worse.
And the Blueberry Festival is in August, so that's tricky. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can't speak directly to the funds right now. I, I know we did have some contingency funds, particularly in the town manager's bucket, but I don't know what's been used year to date or if we need that for something else. So perhaps Josh and I should sit down and look at that and figure that out.
I would say just as, as a first blush that there, depending on what we want to do, I think that we could find some money for this year if you weren't looking to get a 27-piece bed and rent out, you know, the Merrell or anything like that. So I think if there was a scope, we might be able to pinpoint, we might, we should be able to find some money. But I did want to say kicking off to the end of summer might in a way make sense because then you're kind of looping it into the turnover of the boards. So that's when we're kind of have the push of having people either stepping down or stepping up. And I think it'd be kind of cool to have some kind of event around that genesis of new board members as well as thanking old ones coming out, just kind of off the top of my head.
Yeah. Just trying to think of, I don't know if, we can't, I don't know, August might be tricky because of the Blueberry Festival and then like Anna was saying, we have a retreat in September. I don't know how people feel about, we could maybe do June, we could do like an early June kind of thing. Dan, you had a comment?
I suppose once the budget's work is done, June, June certainly would work to build on Josh's flat, though. I mean, we do have a retreat in September. But I think that if we use an organization like Spring Meadows or we do something like that, I think there's going to be some work on our part, but I don't know that it will be that heavy a lift.
What about July?
Well, we, I was thinking June, since it would still be, you know, we might have some turnover, you know, on committees and also this council might turn over in June. But yeah, July is certainly an option.
Summer might be a little harder to get people, I know, but you know, again, I think it's one of those things where we need to sort of make our best guess with what we have right now and just, you know, continually work to improve it. I think getting back on track is a more formal effort, though, will be a plus all by itself whenever we decide to do it.
Yeah, I agree. Do you, Dan or Ann, recall if it was typically on a Saturday, like evening? Is that?
No, it was always a weekday evening.
Oh, okay.
And I thought that worked well. What's that?
I think it was Thursdays was generally what I kind of had my back, Tuesday, yeah. It was Thursday and Thursday as a general.
Right. I mean, I thought it went, I thought it was, well, you know, I went to several of them. They were generally well-attended and, and because the, there wasn't a lot of background noise, you know, people could visit and socialize amongst each other and, and we could really, like I said, sort of control the environment and so that the presentations were observed by everybody. And, and, you know, that was really the function of it. And, and I, you know, I, so I think doing it a weeknight is better than a Saturday.
Okay. Yeah, that would be better for staff, I would imagine. Excuse me also. So why don't we shoot for June? If people are okay with that, that we'd be done for budget and it would be after Community Day? I'm just looking at June 6th. No, that's a Thursday.
Right now, that looks good in my calendar. That's the, then we could remind people to vote if they.
Right.
What do we call it, Volunteer Day?
Volunteer Appreciation.
Yeah, Volunteer Appreciation. Okay, let's tentatively plan for that. And I will sit down, Josh and I, you, Josh, we should sit down and just figure out, because that would be FY24, you know, what that looks like budgetarily. Okay, well, I'm excited. I would love to be part of something for, I've only ever done the Blueberry Festival, so it has felt awkward at times.
What time of night would it be or what time in the evening?
I mean, I would, I would guess like a, like a dinner, because it's, it would be dinner. So like six o'clock-ish, I would say.
Yeah, it was sort of cocktails and, well, I'm sorry, more like hors d'oeuvres, you know, not really cocktails, but, but, you know, heavy on the hors d'oeuvres, lots of, you know, lots of different choices. I think there may have been some dinner, yeah. I can't recall exactly how that went. I'm sure there's town staff who might recall having organized that. And we need to find out whether Spring Meadows is available as well, just at that point.
Yeah, I mean, we, if we, we could potentially look elsewhere if they're not, but that, yeah, that's a good point. I was going to say something else, I can't remember what it was. I'm sure it'll come to me in like 10 minutes. That's okay, I'll, I'll think about it. All right, well, does anyone else have any thoughts?
I was just going to add that, you know, possibly the American Legion Hall would be.
Yeah.
Possible location if Spring Meadows didn't be announced.
Yeah, I had that thought also. I know Spring Meadows has catering in-house, that's the only, if we did. At American Legion, we might have to explore a caterer. Oh, that's what I was going to ask. Josh, we can talk about this when I, when we meet, but we should also think about staff support for organizing, like what that looks like and who would be doing that. Okay, well, I think this is good. I'm glad we touched base on it. It's one of those things we keep talking about, but hadn't circled back to, so. Okay, so we only had one action item tonight and I, I wasn't, I haven't seen any updates from the DOT, but I wanted to leave it on here in case we had them last minute. Ann, have you had any feedback from the DOT about?
Yeah, well, no, nothing firm about when it will be forthcoming, but I have been nudging Dale a couple of times a week and finding reasons to reach out to him, you know, as often as I can and throwing that in there. But he, he did tell me this morning that he was gonna walk down to legal, the legal department's still in legal. I mean, and so he was going to walk down there and find out what the status was. And he did go down, but the person who's in charge of it was, you know, out or at a meeting or something. So, you know, he's still hopeful. I just keep saying to him, we would really love to get this signed so we don't have to worry about it. Let's just, you know, let's keep moving on this. And he says, he's absolutely in agreement. So, I mean, I was, I used to work in state government at main housing and things got stuck in legal all the time, depending on what else was going on. So I, you know, that's just kind of where it is. But so, yeah, we don't have anything for you guys to look at. And I pointed out, Dan, we've now had this on our agenda three times. And, and, you know, with no, no word or real certainty from them about what, you know, when they're going to get it back to us. And so I'll just keep leaning on them.
Okay, so I think we should just obviously leave it tabled for this evening. Do you think I should continue to add it?
Yes.
Should I put it on our February 6th meeting or just wait? I just feel silly, I keep adding it and we're like, we keep not doing it, but.
You know, the people that looks bad, who look bad in this is MDOT. And so I don't think, there's no skin off our nose for being prepared to act on it as quickly as we can. And I'll just let them know, we're going to have it on our agenda until you get it to us.
Okay, yeah, let's approach it that way. Dan, you had a comment?
It's kind of like pushing a rope.
Yeah.
There's just not much you can do, but I agree with Ann. We should leave it on the budget, on our agenda every meeting until we can pay off. My only question is, Ann, when we get it back from them, I must admit, it's been a while since I've read the whole thing. It is kind of a daunting document. When it comes back, I'm a little worried about figuring out what changed and what didn't. So, and I imagine it, it will, if they make any changes, is it something that I would assume we'd have to run by Alyssa ourselves or whoever is looking at it?
Yeah, I mean, I, my thought is that we're just going to have to see when they get it back to us and how much time we have to look at it. If we feel like there's been some really substantive changes that Alyssa needs to look at or that we need to, you know, discuss, then we may not even be able to act. You know, if they get it to us the Friday or they'll say the day before our council meeting, we may not be able to act on it at that council meeting and we'll have to defer it. That's just, you know, that's caught up to them.
Just the way it goes. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you following up and, and trying to hold their feet to the fire anyways. I do appreciate that.
No, thanks.
Okay, well, it's not often we don't have anything to vote on, but we should move on. So next up is the report from the council chair. Just a few things I want to talk about. First up, just reminders about the budget schedule. And I want to thank Dan for working, I don't know if you've all had timed reviews email from today, but he's worked to put timeframes around each day that we've allocated for budget reviews. So the next time we'll be talking about, we talked earlier this evening about revenues with Justine, and that was productive. Our next budget meeting will be February 6th for a public input session at 6 o'clock PM, followed by Saturday, February 10th, all-day workshop, where we will talk about municipal expenses by department. And that's in particular what Dan has broken down timeframes for. And then again, we will meet for an all-day workshop on March 2nd, where we will break down any CIP input, bonds, TIFs, kind of miscellaneous stuff. And as needed, those are the dates we have firm, firmly set aside, but we will be adding workshops as needed as we go through this process. Josh and I met a couple of times since our last meeting. There have been some, I can't get into details here, but there've been some legal matters we've had to touch base on and we probably should at some point have an executive session again just to provide an update around those. Josh and I also met briefly to go confirm up the budget schedule and also discuss his transition plan, since he will be going back to the library at the end of February. And then I just want to remind the public that we are moving forward on town manager interviews. We will be having final interviews with two candidates on January 23rd. Due to privacy reasons in the process, that will be an executive session, but I just want to keep everybody apprised of the fact that we are moving forward. And we will hopefully have someone to make an offer to very soon. That's all I have regarding work as chair. And so I will move on to a report from the town manager.
Most of my report is actually kind of ditto to everything you already said, town manager's progressing. Biggest thing that I had is to send apologies to some people of the community. I was recently made aware that the online portal that people would use to contact the town manager was being forwarded to a dead email box that I had was no longer checking. So I found it when someone followed up on one of, an email, meaning that there was a brief span of time where people were writing to me and I was not responding. So I am working my way back through that backlog of those submissions. If anyone has reached out to me through the website and has not heard back from me, you are on my queue and coming to and my deepest apologies. And I always kind of enjoy it where I find mistakes that I didn't know I was making and get pointed out to get fixed up. So if you want to talk to the town manager, you can now use the website or townmanagergraeme.org. And apart from that, I would just like to thank the council for all the work they've done with the hiring of the next town manager. I think that there are two fantastic candidates that we have, that either one of which would be absolutely wonderful for the future. And I think that this process has been done really well and really thorough. So just thank you all for that. And that's all I've had in the last two weeks.
Great, thank you, Josh. And I also want to just thank all the department heads for continuing to provide reports as part of our packet. I, I think we all really appreciate those and there are a lot of good detail that we're not privy to usually. Okay, so I will move on to committee reports. Marty, why don't you start us off this evening?
Okay, while Blueberry Festival met last night via electronic medium, we discussed the issues for the eighth Blueberry Festival, which is August 10th. Issues like fees, food vendors and the website, making available two wheelchairs, placement of the ambulance, traffic, parking across the street, a mini bus. If we get to use the parking lots at the Fiddleheads or the mall, we'll need a, we'll need a means to get people back and forth. The planning board met January 11th, discussed two issues. One was Campbell Acres subdivision got a waiver for flooding standards and stormwater relief, and it was approved and area states, their request was tabled to get, because they have some more work. their request was tabled to get, because they have some more work to do on it. And then Dan Cobb was re-elected chair and Tamara Pennard was re-elected vice chair. Their next meeting is February 8th. Zoning Board will meet again January 24th. A community day like we discussed will be Saturday, May 18th. I don't, I have nothing for the finance committee. And that's all I've got.
Thank you Marty.
Good.
Anne?
Yes. Open space, we were gonna go to a workshop with Planning Board this week, I think, or, or last Thursday, but that has been rescheduled to February 8th, there were some reasons why that didn't work out. And the committee decided to populate a spreadsheet with recommendations for, that, that sort of covers recommendations for land to conserve. Just a reminder, we are looking for a few new members for, for that committee, it's a really terrific group. I just can't say enough about how excited I am to work with them, just really, they're smart and committed and, and they get stuff done. Resiliency met again to refine the top five priorities and to prepare for their council presentation and an upcoming workshop. And again, really hardworking, exciting group, we're gonna meet again, they've been meeting twice a month just to get caught up because we weren't meeting during the fall and we have an upcoming grant opportunity. And so, so they're gonna meet again on this coming Monday with the Lake Association heads, you know, the chairs of the Lake Association. Vision Zero had another meeting. I'm on the advisory panel for that and this is something that Cumberland County, I'm sorry, the Greater Portland Council of Governments is leading, they've got a grant to do some planning with rural communities, rural and island communities in Cumberland County. This is their second trip through this process because they did one with the more urban communities earlier. And there's some sense that once they complete the action plan for the target area, they'll be looking for the, the participating towns to endorse it, so that's just really a heads up. I mean, we'll know more about the timing for that later in the, the winter, early spring, but it'll be sometime in April or May. And I just, I want to say, I really appreciate everyone who completed the Vision Zero Traffic Safety Survey and mapping exercise. The, the lead staff person from Greater GP COG told me that they saw a spike in responses from Gray. He was very excited about that and I do think that, you know, this input is really about telling GP COG and, and the advisory panel, what's not, where's, where is it not safe, where does it not feel safe to drive, to walk or to bike in, in these target communities in Cumberland County and I, I believe on the town Facebook page has been promoting that and on the Instagram and, and you could, and certainly if you're interested in filling it out and you don't know how to get to the link, let me know and I can get it to you. The, just an update on what we locally refer to as LD1, but is kind of confusing moniker for a lot of folks because there's a new LD1 every year, every legislative year. But that, that really refers to the municipal property tax cap and Krista and I will be meeting with Representative Annie Graham and Senator Teresa Pierce to discuss next steps on this legislation. I, I've heard from Wyndham's Town Manager Barry Tibbetts, who said "The elimination of this law would save municipalities a lot of time figuring out the limits each year, it is unnecessary." And to his recollection, he says, "I've never heard of the state checking out the calculations of the 492 municipalities. We need to eliminate unnecessary laws" and that's really kind of the camp that I'm, I'm in as well. So we're, that's continuing to kind of work through the process. It got, somehow got assigned to taxation up in, up in Augusta and it was supposed to be assigned to the State and Local Government Committee and, and no, I think that's happening now. Finally, the, we talked, we've already spoken about the the Village Transformation Project, we're, and we're still waiting for the cooperative agreement. The, meanwhile, the Communications Committee has met and we're still working toward a I'm sorry, no, it wasn't the Communications Committee that met, it was the, the kind of core Gray Committee that met last week. And we're still working toward a February 5th meeting with village business owners and property owners. But, and we're you know, gonna be bringing to you a proposal from the principal group for their next tranche of work. One, and, and one of the things that we need to be focusing on if we really are gonna get serious about it is how to is to try to get a better handle on the cost of, of putting utilities underground. And so I'll reach out to Josh and we'll talk about how to start that process. Some of that work has, you know, got underway, but it was over a year ago and I will just need to pick it up and figure out how to move it forward, so. That's what I'll be working on there.
Great, thank you Anne. Matthew? You're muted, Matthew.
Yeah, here I, I can do all sorts of things with Teams except for unmute myself. Dan, did you want to say something?
No, I don't think so.
I thought he just raised his hand. So the Rec Committee met on January 8th and I guess I would just say that Anthony Doms sent me a Teams invite with a link to the meeting, which worked very well. And and so and everything, basically the meeting agenda, if you look at the, at his report to the town manager in our, in our packet, that's basically what we talked about in the meeting. So I won't, I won't ramble on and try and recreate that if that's alright. Dry Mills Schoolhouse met on the 15th, anyway, you know, the Rec Committee does great work. Really, really effective committee also and and of course Anthony's doing all sorts of, all sorts of good things with. Also, so we met, Dry Mills met last night, the Dry Mills School Committee and Sandra Carter is the new chair of the Dry Mills School Committee, she was elected last night. Because she doesn't have enough going on. Let's see, and then Great Community Television meets on the 24th and and then next month the Rec Committee meets on the 5th again. And, and it starts all over again. So, that's my committee report.
Thank you Matthew. Dan, are you there? Your video's not on, but you're up this year, available.
I am here, not sure why my video's not on. Yes, let's see. A couple more things to talk about Planning Board. I think everybody will be pleased, Area States, which is a subdivision that's being planned up by Eagles Nest. There's been a lot of conversation around open space. I think the developer in this case has done a really good job, their Eagles Nest has some open space. They have actually reconfigured the open space of this subdivision so that you can connect and they're providing a public easement so that you can travel across one to the other, so. That feels like a little win after all the years of trying to start to connect the dots with some of these efforts. I think OAC is looking at open space with regards to the open space subdivisions and just the quality of lands issue there, the Planning Board was very happy to hear that. I think there are a couple of small ordinance changes that we could make, I don't think it would take a lot of staff time or time on our part. Planning Board has given a couple of waivers fairly consistently for streetlights that are required at the end of, that end subdivision roads. And for granite markers instead of steel ones. Little things like that that sort of slow the process down. That force people to ask for waivers and I think we could make some quick changes to those. I did fill out the Zero Vision survey, which, which was pretty interesting actually. Over on Jenny Drive, another Planning Board, another Planning Board gave final approval to the Campbell Acres development over there, which is four duplexes. Because of the terrain over there, the developer asked for a waiver regarding the street and how it connects with Jenny Drive. They're unable to slope the road such that it doesn't drain out towards Jenny Drive, but the Planning Board cut that and basically the solution to that problem is they will put something in the plan that will be registered that will require homeowners association to plow their road in a particular way such that the, there's always a path for water in the winter to the the ditch along Jenny Drive, so it was, it was, it was good to see the Planning Board in action when they picked up on the fact that it could be a real issue, especially with the kind of weather we're having these days. But it also shows, I think, the flexibility that they really do work with the developer to try and come up with a plausible solution to the problems that they bump into. So it was, it was, it was nice to see the Planning Board in action at their last meeting. Their next meeting is gonna be February 8th. GBA has a meeting the 24th of this month. Of course, we and I think that's all I have for committee work, thank you.
Thanks Dan. We actually had our quarterly joint leaders meeting last week on the 11th, which was attended by representatives of New Gloucester and also the school district. Wanted to note that they the district had funding, I think through a grant to install flashing lights at the roads outside of the Dunn School and Memorial School during school hours. I inquired about whether or not we could see such thing at Russell School or on Shaker Road and Sam Feifel, the school board, encouraged us to budget for that. So I just want to raise that because I know that's been a concern I've seen in the community because there's been a lot of speeding during school drop-off and pickup hours out on, on Shaker Road, so that might be something we should explore during budget season. The district, school district in partnership with the DOT is going to be working on fixing the intersection at 26 to better time the lights and also add a right turn lane to help with traffic backups on the road down towards the school. They're, and then they're also waiting for approval on the earmark to make improvements on that road also and also add an emergency egress, so hopefully the federal budget will be passing soon for that. There was also discussion and a request particularly from New Gloucester for more regionally collaborative opportunities, I think this has come up just sort of in theory a lot, particularly with fire rescue. But they're definitely interested in pursuing something potentially and was curious whether or not GP COG would be able to help with that, so I'd offered to reach out as part of the executive committee, so I'll be doing that. And our next meeting will be in April, we're actually gonna be having it at the Pineland Campus because, I don't know if everyone's aware, Unity College now has a fairly significant footprint there and we're hoping we might find some opportunities to collaborate around recreation for the towns and also the school district was interested in potentially doing something for credit for students at the high school. And then I also want to note, the district, school district is having a lot of discussions during their budgeting process around potential bonds. One, we've seen proposed before for facilities upgrades at the high school in particular for both recreational fields and also the buildings themselves. But they've also been informed that there is a new state law that is requiring monitoring carbon dioxide levels in each classroom and they have to be at a certain level. They had testing done, I believe, in, over the summer or spring, I don't recall exactly which, but all their classrooms failed, the minimum. So they are going to basically need to bond with some state support to upgrade all the HVAC systems in every building. So just want to flag that for people, watch for that during their budgeting process. That's all I have for joint leaders. The Ordnance Advisory Committee also met on January 11th and we're meeting again on February 1st. As Dan alluded to, we're continuing to look at open space subdivisions, in particular to align with both our comprehensive plan and the new LD 2003 requirements. They're looking at things like number of lots in a subdivision, parcel configuration and also as Anne and I think Dan noted, we're, we're working with, Doug rather, is working with the Open Space Committee on drafting a map that identifies current open spaces that we would like to connect with for any new open space subdivisions, so that would be available in advance to any developers looking to do an open space subdivision in the future. There was some conversation also about the types of open space subdivisions, we're kind of expanding the definition of those. One in particular is multifamily open space, so this would be different than just a multifamily subdivision in our growth areas, this would be multifamily open space subdivision, which would allow for you know, similar to a, you know, a single family open space subdivision, it would have open space around it and within it designated so that the lot sizes could be smaller. One concern brought up by some OAC members was whether or not those are appropriate and what's currently designated as our rural areas. Or whether they'd be better only in transitional and growth zones that have been identified in our plan. They didn't make any decisions, but I just told them I would raise it with the council because I really think ultimately that's a council decision, so. As we're looking at any ordinance changes related to open space subdivisions that Doug brings forward, we should just keep that in mind, it's where those multifamily open space subdivisions are really appropriate. GP COG Executive Committee met this afternoon, we're meeting again on February 27th. This afternoon's meeting focused mostly on their, a presentation of their FY23 audit, which was done by RKO auditing firm. It was all very good, they had an unmodified opinion, which essentially means it was a clean audit. Revenues were down in FY23 mostly due to the federal and state pandemic grants that are no longer, those were kind of a one-time grant that have expired. But they do actually expect some of the federal and state grant funds to be increasing in FY24 due to the Infrastructure Act and other things that they've received grant monies for. We also talked about FY25 dues, so if you recall, last year GP COG at the General Assembly approved a membership dues increase that was staggered beginning last year. Last year's dues went up from $2 per capita to $2.10 per capita. Originally, the, the goal was to increase that in the two following years to $2.20 for FY25 and then $2.25 for FY26. The Executive Committee actually took action today at the recommendation of staff to hold off on those increases for FY25 and keep them steady at $2.10 per capita. The main impetus for that is because the GP COG is currently undergoing a new strategic planning process and they wanted to hold off on any dues increases until that's been finalized, so they know what the dues are supporting. So just as we're budgeting, we should maintain the current rate, which is $2.10 per capita and I shall share that with Justine, so she can budget for that. That's all I have for committees. Okay, we can move, if no one has any questions, we can move on to correspondence and activities. Dan, do you want to start us off?
Sure, the only one I had this time was from Linda Kane, I don't know if others of you were on that email. She had written to us a couple of years ago, she's very interested in an awfully stog park. She had written to us a couple of years ago, she's very interested in an off-leash dog park. It came up actually at the time of the, uh, it was proposed to use the old landfill, but then we put the solar farm there. I can circulate that amongst everybody. That certainly would be a budgetary item. And, um, you know, finding, finding a home for that would, would be a question, but, it, it is something I'll bring up as we get into the budget to see if there's interest to support that on the council. That is all I have.
Yeah, just, uh, oh, go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask a question to Dan about that. I mean, is there, I, I know, I did see that, um, email from Linda, as well, and I'm just wondering, is there, you know, it would be great to get a, a group of dog owners who are interested in, in seeing a park happen and, help to put it together. I, I don't think that this is a council or staff, you know, priority, uh, right now, especially this, this year, and it, 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 you know, and I, I just really think if, if the dog owners want something like this, I'm certainly not averse to it, but I, we'd love their help in, figuring out where it should go and what would the rules be and managing it and all that kind of stuff. So I, I'd love to see folks step forward on that.
Well, the council could, you know, certainly, uh, create an ad hoc committee to do that.
Yeah, sure.
We've had two letters from, uh, Linda, we could, you know, kick, kick the idea to her and see what she thinks.
Yeah, the dog park-
That's a great idea, it's, I think finding the spot is gonna be the hardest.
Yeah, just, the dog park also came up a lot as we were doing surveys and such, um, during the comprehensive plan, planning process. So I know it's something that's been an interest for multiple residents and, um, but yeah, I think the location would be key and also just, finding the time and energy to organize that, so maybe an ad hoc committee would perhaps be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of like the, the skateboard park, right?
Right.
We haven't really moved on that because there hasn't been anybody coming to us and saying, "We really love to see this happen and we're gonna help you make it, make it happen."
Dan, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay. Marty, do you have anything? Oh, you're muted, Marty. You're still muted.
Upper right, Mike?
Kyle, are you able to unmute Marty? I don't know, I can't do it.
I can only mute people, not unmute them, unfortunately.
The afternoon of January 11th, I observed the webinar for, on the, uh, short-term rentals, rentals. It seemed like the issues they were discussing were meant more for the property owner that, that, than, uh, than a municipality. They were concerned about overregulating, and I can remember from my, before I left Florida, the, uh, Volusia County outlawed all short-term, short-term rentals, because it was affecting the, the, the hotel's income and property values crashed. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Marty.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't have anything other than what Dan spoke about. I am planning on attending, uh, Maine Municipal Association Elected Officials' webinar on January 25th. But, uh, that's all I've got for correspondence and, and such.
Okay, thank you. Anne?
I don't have any correspondence other than what Dan already talked about.
Okay. So my correspondence and activities, Anne already mentioned, um, we met with Principal Group and some core team members here in Gray on the 10th. Um, and I'll be meeting, as she mentioned also, um, with Anne and, um, our state reps on January 22nd, to talk about LD1 and this, uh, process that's going through with the legislature. There, I will be attending, and I believe, um, Dan was planning to go to, um, the GP Cog Chairs in a Circle Event on January 25th. That should be a good conversation, they'll be talking, Alyssa Tibbetts, actually, our, legal representation, will be leading a discussion about polarization and government and such. As I mentioned earlier, um, we should be expecting a presentation, um, by the people working on the Douglas Field relocation and the grant supporting that in the next month or so, pending Sapego Tech Next Draft. And then, um, Josh and I had further information from the folks at Federal Emergency Management Association regarding the updated flood maps, that we had received, and we actually will need to review and approve those as a council prior to June 20th of this year. If we do not approve them before that date, um, people with flood insurance will lose access to it. So it's actually pretty urgent that we address those. I don't have a sense yet of how big of a lift that is, um, so we just need to follow up with that, um, with Doug and the representatives, who are managing that at the state level. Also, I had an inquiry from Lisa Linney Gilmore about, um, continuing her work with, uh, with Lacey Antonson about, um, the comp plan coordinator work they're doing. They would like to send out a survey to committees and staff, um, just getting an update on what they're doing, for work, um, as it relates to comprehensive plan implementation, and so I need to coordinate that with them, uh, figure out what that looks like. That's all I have, I think. Okay. Is there any, oh, go ahead, Matthew.
I, yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about, access to meetings, you know, I, and, uh, like, I couldn't find the link in the agenda, I mean, for the workshop, and, when I went back and looked, it's like, okay, there's a link there, but it doesn't, you know, like, it's not, like, sort of highlighted in a different color, it doesn't say "meeting link," you know, like, it just seems to me that, so, and I get, I sign up for emails, and I get an email from the town, it says, "You can find a link to the meeting on the portal." And you go to the portal, and you gotta click on the agenda if you think to click on the agenda, and then you gotta find the link. And I just wonder if, I mean, that, that's my route anyway, it just, I wonder if there couldn't be a link, right in the portal, under where it says "video", and/or if there couldn't be a Teams link embedded in that email, it goes out to everyone who signs up for an email notice of the meetings. That's, here's the link, right in the email, and you just click on it, rather than having multiple drill downs to try and find it, and if you're not familiar with it, I mean, I had my partner look at it, and she didn't know what to do, and, you know, and, uh, and I said, "Oh, it's in the, in the agenda, it's in the agenda," you know? And so she clicked on the agenda and she looked around and, "Oh, well, this looks like a link," but, you know what I mean? If somebody were trying to attend a meeting, I think it would be difficult for them.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
That's certainly fair. Kyle, who's in charge of all that, says we can certainly look at the issue, so, we will follow up with that. Matthew, thank you.
Sorry for the rant.
That's okay. I just, since we're online and I can't see people, I know there's some, um, members of the public watching, and, and we do have space at the end of the agenda for public comment on non-agenda items, so just, wondering if anyone would like to make a comment on non-agenda items here before we adjourn. Please raise your hand, um, if you do. Seeing anybody? Okay. All right, so then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at 8:02 PM.
Don't move.
Give it to Anne and Matthew. Right, Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Anne?
Hey, we're ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
Dan? I'm also a yes. Okay, thanks everyone for hanging out online tonight. Hopefully we'll be back at it in our hybrid format on February 6th.
Goodnight, everyone.
Thanks, goodnight.
Thank you.
Goodnight, everyone, bye.